Good evening. This is Heather with you open this one. Prayer please.
Heavenly Father, in light of all the things going on in this world, I'm asking you to, those who in the sound of my voices, even to join me in prayer and action. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Oh Divine Master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it's in dying that we are born to eternal life. All this we ask in the precious name of Jesus, and we count it all done. Amen.
Call the Kershaw campus due for this trust meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda?
Yes.
Properly, motion by Ms. Ferns, second by Coach Blackman. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the policy stand? Is there a motion to adopt the consent, to approve the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Second?
Properly, motion by Dr. King, second by Mr. Cameron. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the policy stand? We are thankful for everyone that have gathered here, community, friends, families, and Mark Conventi, Convent Independent. That takes us to our recognition and celebration.
Mr. Chair, member of the board, tonight, we have a really special recognition and celebrations time. Sheriff and I met some weeks back and discussed an idea that he had, which was tonight is promotion ceremony for our SROs. And we are so glad to have them as partners, but more importantly, we're glad to have them here on behalf of the safety of our children in Kershaw County School District. We have really a unique relationship between the Sheriff's Department, the town of Elderton, and also the city of Camden, in our partnerships with our SROs. So tonight, we're going to turn it over to the sheriff and recognize some good work from some folks.
Thank you. You know where special I need to be here?
I don't know your schedule. I'm not sure if you have any place to be.
Thank you for having us tonight. We wanted to do a brief ceremony. We didn't want to hold your meeting up too long, but I felt like this was something really important that we wanted to do before the school board. The partnership we have with the school district here, I don't know that, I don't know that it exists anywhere else, but it really works well here, and we intend to keep it like this here. When we have our promotions or even our hiring process for our SROs, we invite the school district along with us. I've always felt that a principal is like a, it's like a mayor on that school campus, and we need to support that, that principal. So I want the principal and the SROs to get along, so we tend to, or we try to always have them involved with the hiring and promotion process. All the promotions we have tonight were because we have school board members, principals that came out and was part of the boards that picked these promotions for tonight, and I think that's a really good thing, and like I said, we hope to keep it going. Start out with Tom Dell Campbell. Tom Dell being promoted to corporal tonight. And a little side note off of Tom Dell is he's our Lugolf Optimist Club SRO of the Year. He's got, got an award here recently. She counts for about half the prowlers here. Next one is our sergeant, Billy Dunlap. Last but not least, Coleman Smith, our captain. And attendance tonight is his dad, Scotty Smith, who I worked with for several years at the city of Camden, and of course, that has nothing to do with your promotion, but I'm going to know. Let me just point out, a captain, as far as our command staff goes, a captain is on our command staff, so this is a voice for the SRO, they're their own division at the sheriff's office. Just kind of back up on the wall, let's see if we can get one line, and if the board members want to stand up behind us here and get some photo bomb in between the...
Yeah, I was going to say, if you're there, that's good, that works. I'm losing Rebecca. There we go. All right, perfect.
Ready, one, two, three.
Yep. And three, two.
Anyone that wants to step out at this time, they do so.
William, where are you going? William?
He got selected here.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of board. I come for you, before you tonight, with a request for some additional activity supplements. After the facilities and finance committee meeting last Tuesday, I submitted an updated memorandum, which should be in your board pack. One of our high schools made a request, but I'm recommending this for all three of our high schools. There are three different requests. The first request is to add two cross-country assistant positions, one for our boys team, one for our girls teams, so six total positions over the three high schools. The second request is to add two additional track supplements for each, assistant supplements for each of our high schools. If they meet a threshold of forty participants, they already have a assistant supplement, but this would add to that if their, if their numbers swell like they are at some of our schools. And then the third request is to add an assistant strength coach position at each of our three high schools. It is my recommendation that all these positions be paid on the assistant coaching supplement scale that we discussed in the facilities and finance meeting, which would be similar to our other assistant coaches based on years' experience. And so I appreciate your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation, we accept the administration's recommendation as presented.
Just a second.
Second.
Properly, motion by Coach Blackman, second by Mr. Cameron. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Does the policy stand? Thank you.
Thank you. Great work.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, and members of the board. This evening, I am presenting for second reading the proposed policy revision related to policy GLCE and GLCER regarding unencumbered time for school nurses. As a reminder, this policy update is being brought forward in response to the state proviso 1.111, which requires school districts to allocate thirty minutes of unencumbered time during the workday for school nurses. This proposal was presented to the board for first reading at the October twenty-first board meeting, and tonight, we respectfully request that the board consider adopting this policy revision to ensure full compliance with state law and to continue supporting our nursing staff. And I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
This is the second reading. Any questions for Mr. Stone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. King.
Just to note them for clarification, so the public knows, and I certainly appreciate your efforts, and obviously, this is something that trickles down from the state level as well, which is encompassed by most districts anyway, but it's probably worth noting that just because this will be implemented doesn't mean health room is going unattended, because there's an assistant there as well.
Absolutely.
And so, business will continue as usual, but they'll get a most deserved rest.
Absolutely, and we actually have a backup plan to the backup plan, so we have two and three emergency backups in every school besides our health room and assistant. So we try to plan for flu season.
Pause this before us, is that motion?
I'll make the motion we... Mr. Chair, I make the motion we accept it as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. King, second by Mr. Roberts. That's correct. Okay. Any more discussion? If there are none, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. And that's enough. Thank you. Chairman's report, Mr. Cameron, would you share what does band contest?
Yes, and I've, Coach, I'm going to apologize, you know, I got some ties out there in your naked woods. I was out at the South Carolina Band Director Association 1A State Championships preliminaries and finals this Saturday, and I just wanted to take a moment and share with the, with the board and the public what a wonderful event. Mr. Liam Martin, Mr. Branham, Mr. Daniel Humbert, and team, that entire community out there came together to put on performances, to provide a space for performances and all the things that go with that, concessions, you name it, they had it out there, and it was an all-day-long event for twenty-four bands from the state of South Carolina, and all of them, of course, Class 1A bands for the day. The day started with the first band in warm-up at seven-thirty in the morning, and the last, we stepped off the field at ten-thirty at night after having presented the championship award that evening. But I wanted to just point out, Mr. Martin and Mr. Branham did a bang-up job. Mr. Humbert, my understanding is, never left the school Friday. When he showed up Friday, he stayed through the night Friday night and met with the South Carolina Band Director Association's director of the event when he showed up after the football game, so that they could go through some things and start setting some things up. He never left the school that evening. He didn't leave until after. I left before he did Saturday, so I'm sure he stuck around till the wee hours of the morning there wrapping things up. But a great job. We were also very well-represented. Mr. Glenn Price, former director at Lugolf Elgin High School, Mr. Robert Works, former director at Camden High School, also South Carolina Band Director Association Hall of Famers in their own right, they presented awards that evening. I had the opportunity to stand alongside them as well and was honored to do so, but it was a very well-put-on event. The Band Directors Association just bragged about our facilities and everything that they had available to them, and how well the community came together, including the elementary school and the middle school, providing places for parking, for warm-up areas and all of that stuff, so we appreciate that effort. And if I recall correctly, and somebody would need to correct me, but I've been here for a while, it's been a number of years since a band contest has happened in our community or in our county, and a Band Director Association preliminary event or finals event hasn't happened in decades. So it's nice for us to be back on the map with our Band Director Association doing these fine things. So congratulations to those people, and I will add that our own North Central High School came in ninth in the state out of those twenty-four bands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, when we met with facilities and finance, we had a late facility waiver, so Mr. Smith is going to bring that to you tonight for review and approval.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, school board members. I bring before you a facility waiver or reduction request from the Seaming Crusaders that used Blaney Elementary School multi-purpose room. They asked for a full waiver, but to be consistent with what we have done in the past, they are a longtime renter from us, by the way, have done a great job of taking care of our facilities while they used it, and they have always been real good to work with. So administration's recommendation is half off the rental, full custodial, which came to a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. I'll be glad to ask and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for him? Oops, okay. My, I'm watching to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cameron, second by Ms. Lemon. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
That's enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, also tonight, and members of board, we have the distinct pleasure to bring you the results of the state and federal report cards. This has been sort of a culmination, this is sort of the culmination of the season of reporting of data, and as you recall, we were supposed to be bringing this back in October, but there were some glitches, and we appreciate the state department's devote, you know, their devotion to getting it right. When all was said and done, they came back to our numbers. When all this process started, we got a little worried, because our numbers weren't agreeing with theirs, and through the whole process, there literally were hundreds of a point that they differed from us, and we can accept that, because those are rounding errors in there. This is not the destination, this is just part of the journey. We are very, very proud, though, of the work, just to echo what we've said, as test scores have come out and other reports, we are so proud of the work of, of not just teachers, but it's a whole team effort, it's everybody in the building that makes these results happen, and we were so proud of what they've done. It was interesting, I was able to go to Lugolf Elgin Middle School on Monday and deliver Chick-fil-A biscuits and juice around the building. Mr. Matthews took North Central Elementary, they were our two excellent schools. It's worth noting that both of those schools moved from average to excellent and skipped good, and, but it was nice to see the smiles. Had a couple of first-year teachers at Lugolf Elgin Middle School who were telling me, well, I wasn't here last year, and I said, yeah, but you're here this year, and you know the expectation now, so enjoy your biscuit, because that's, we're paying you upfront for the job well done. And, you know, but to see the camaraderie that's come together. But I think the most important thing, and then I'll let them go ahead with the report, is that our folks understand the system now. That's something that we've worked hard as a school district, especially Ms. Corner has worked hard, is to helping people understand how these measurements work and how you can, how you can promote student growth in the right ways. It's one thing just to play for test scores, that's not what we're about. We're about educating children and making sure that they reach their fullest potential, and that's what the goal is, and how does that mesh with these measures? So with, with that being said, I'm going to let them share the good news, there's a lot of good news to share, and we certainly hope that if you have any questions, that you'll interrupt them and stop and let's talk about it.
All right, we're going to start by just quickly going over the elementary and middle school indicators again. I know last year, we briefly went over those as well. The first one is academic achievement, that's usually worth thirty-five points, and as SD ready meets and exceeds on the ELA in math, it's worth forty points if you do not have an ML group. The second one is the one Dr. Goodwin was referring to, that's the student progress, and that's the one that, as I've been going out in schools, we've been focusing on, those are individual student growth targets. Those are, that's also worth thirty-five points unless you don't have an ML group, and then it's worth forty as well. Preparing for success is your meets and exceeds on fourth or sixth grade science. ML progress is worth ten points if you have an ML subgroup, and I listed the schools that had one last year, that's Blaney, Camden Elementary, Jackson, Midway, and Camden Middle, as far as elementary and middle schools. For this year, Blaney will not have one, but Dobie's Mill will, so there's a slight change in that. And then finally, you have your school climate, and that's worth ten points, and that's your teacher and student surveys. Then you have your overall ratings by level, those, that's the scores that are needed, and just to point out, there are, there's different scores for each level based off the level of school. Now you'll see the overall ratings for elementary. If it is highlighted in blue, that means they went up at least one level, and as Dr. Goodwin already pointed out, we have two that went up two levels, and those both went from average to excellent. I also want to point out how close a few schools were of also going up a level. The one that was really heartbreaking, and we actually went back and looked at every single student just to make sure we couldn't find it, Watery Elementary was only point zero-three from hitting good, and so that one was heartbreaking. And then we also had Blaney and Lugolf were also very close to hitting excellent, so we're working really hard to make sure we get those two next year. And I also want to point out, Jackson Elementary had tremendous growth this year, it just hasn't shown on the report card yet, but we'll see that next year as well. Then looking at our middle school ratings, three of our middle schools rated average, and then of course Lugolf Elgin Middle was excellent. And on those middle schools, we're really, the focus that we need, when we went out to every middle school separately, is what's going to get us to the next level, is going to be the student progress.
Some of the takeaways from our elementary and middle schools, first, recognize that no school dropped. We had no school drop a level, and only two schools dropped in points, so that's tremendous work. Four of our nine elementary schools increased at least one level. Again, as Ms. Corners said, North Central Elementary and Lugolf Middle increased two levels to go from average to excellent. Additionally, Lugolf Elgin Middle School went from below average to excellent in the student progress subcategory. Seven of the nine elementary schools and three of the four middle schools scored average or above in student progress. Three elementary schools scored good, one middle school scored excellent. The year before, no school scored above average in this area, excuse me, which means we're meeting the growth targets for our students. We'll continue to use these targets to zone in on each individual student's academic needs. The student progress indicator shows high growth in our multilingual learner subgroup, which is outstanding. They are some of our most at-risk kids and can count as much as eight times on your school report card in each indicator, but also could be in your bottom twenty percent, which counts at least twice, and they have their own subcategory. Our elementary schools show high growth in our lowest twenty percent in most subgroups, and we still have some progress to make in our students with disabilities in all areas. Our middle and elementary school plan of actions, individual school plans are based on their overall and individual student data. We continue our strong tier-one primary instruction focus with our high-quality instructional materials, visible learning, the state department resources, we're conducting learning walks in our elementary schools, and we'll take that into our middle schools in the spring, and our data protocols, which begin again on November the seventeenth for our schools. Continue in-depth professional learning for all school leadership teams and teacher teams on our school report card indicators, Ms. Corners been in almost every school at this point. This continues to include a deep dive into the relevant data for our district level down to individual students. We've been very intentional on strengthening our PLCs and redesigning our data holes for our elementary and middle schools. Our MTSS and progress monitoring focus on the growth of individual students needing tier-two and tier-three assistance to reach grade-level proficiency. We have to introduce them to on-grade level standards, even if they're struggling, because if they don't have, if they haven't been exposed, they can't be expected to master it. We continue to use data for reteaching, identifying unmastered standards and immediate remediation for our students. Very proud of our multilingual learners. We continue to work with our, our teachers, our multilingual experts to best serve our students, so we can meet our interim targets, provide professional development on effective strategies in all classrooms, just like with our special education students, our multilingual students are in every classroom. They're not only in a, in a ML classroom, but they're in a tier-one everyday classroom, and so they belong to us all. Math changes, as last year, we talked a lot about our English changes, this year, it's math changes, so we've had significant changes, including new texts, which has allowed us a great opportunity to build from the ground up. Our ready support, throughout the school year, we've been very pleased at the support we've had from our textbook vendor. They are in our, in our schools monthly, helping give professional development to our teachers. Ms. Corner has helped design our writing focus, professional learning opportunities quarterly to include TW Rubik training, sample prompts, daily writing strategies, close reading, and student exemplars. Increase daily writing and text responses to focus on narrative, argumentative, and informational items. Increase sustained writing opportunities for our students to convey an experience, to persuade, to inform. It's, what we don't want to have are students who don't respond. That's points we're leaving on the table. We need everybody to respond when they have that opportunity. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, it's really not a question, but, so those of us who have been in education for a while, when we look at this and when we see things like tier-one instruction, tier-two HQIM, we know what that means. Would you mind, just for maybe parents and community members, give a brief overview of tier-one, two, and three kind of... of tier-one, two, and three, kind of what they do and how they're different?
Sure, and HQIM. HQIM is the state's term for high-quality instructional materials. They've been very focused as they have changed the standards to be sure that the new texts that we're adopting are aligned to our standards and they are of high quality. Some districts are only using the text for instruction. So one of our neighbors is only allowing their teachers to use the assessments from the textbook. That's how strongly they feel about the quality of their text. Tier-one is primary instruction that all students receive. Everybody, when I teach a class, everybody in my class gets one dose of instruction. Then tier-two is when, what happens when students don't master the material? So if I'm teaching a math class and Leslie doesn't master what I'm doing, what am I doing to remediate her, to help her catch up in the class? So that's done in small group learning, in individual instruction in elementary classroom. They have kidney tables and they're bringing them up to the kidney tables and they have small group instruction right there. Tier-three is an even more intensive intervention when students go to a reading interventionist, a math interventionist, in another classroom in addition to the tier-one, the tier-two, and the tier-three instruction. So they're getting a triple dose of the instruction to help catch them up and be sure they're on point with mastery of standard.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
High school report cards. There are different indicators for high school. Academic achievement is worth 25 points and those are our English one and algebra one EOCs. They're looking for Cs or higher. Preparing for success is 10, that's biology one and US history EOCs, C or higher. School climate is worth five points and that's teacher and student surveys. ML progress is 10 and that's meeting interim targets again. And Camden and Lugolf Elgin have ML groups. Grad rate is your four-year cohort percentage. High school success is the percentage on track to graduate and I'm going to go over that one a little bit more in detail. And then lastly is your college and career readiness and there's multiple avenues. So to go a little bit more in depth with your high school student success, starting last year, we went, we covered all the years. So at the end of year one of high school, students had to have C's credits, one English, one math. At the end of year two, those students had to have 12 credits, including two English and two math. At the end of year three, they had to have 18 credits, three English, three math. Of course, at the end of year four, we wanted them to grad rate. And then if for some reason that did not happen, we can get them counted in the five-year rate. And that is your percentage of students earning a diploma, GD, or South Carolina High School Employability credential in five years or less. So we can get credit for the students that took longer than four years in that five-year rate. And that is the piece that counts 12% for the high school success. Our college ready and career ready options in Kershaw County School District. ACT scored a 20 or higher. SAT moved from 10, 20 to 10, 40. So that one changed from last year. Scoring a three on an AP exam or C's credit hours in dual enrollment with a six or above. That's our good C or above. Career ready is being a CTE completer, earning a Level III credential on the WIN Career Ready Test, scoring a 31 or higher on ASAB, finishing your high school employability credentials, and that's for students with disability who won't earn a high school diploma. And the one we've really capitalized on for students who aren't meeting any of the other criteria is having a state-approved work-based learning exit evaluator. So that's when they're going to do an internship and get a state-approved exit evaluation from an employer.
If I may, Mr. Chair. I have just one quick question, clarification. You mentioned that the SAT score is 10, 40 or higher and you said that changed.
It was 10, 20 before.
When you said last year, 10, 20 last year, so our ratings for this current report card that came out was based on 10, 20?
Yes.
So 10, 40 is for this year's report card. Okay, thank you.
So if you look at our high school ratings, two of our schools went up a level. Camden High went from below average to average and Lugolf Elgin High went from average to good. And that was a last-minute find, so that was during, we spent fall break trying to points for high schools because we got last-minute opportunity and so that was exciting. North Central was still average, but went up quite a few points. And then we also pulled some select indicators that we felt our high schools did really well on, especially according to state averages. As you can see, Camden High School went up on all three of those. We pulled grad rate, CCR, and the high school student success, the on-track indicator. As you can see, Camden went up 13.5 on college and career readiness. A lot of those are due to the internships with the exit evaluation. Lugolf Elgin High School, they went up on their college and career readiness and North Central went up on their college and career readiness and their high school student success
The other indicators in high school, you've already seen, we've already shared with you the EOC results and the AP results. Our high school takeaways, all of our high schools increased in overall points. Two of our high schools increased a level. Two out of three of our high schools scored below average in academic achievement and preparing for success and we're continuing to work on improving our EOC scores through our new PLC model. Grad rates are holding steady or improving. We're doing very well with our CCR rates. Our career development facilitators, our CDFs have contributed greatly to this increase. We're at or above the state average for college and career ready and career ready. All of our high schools scored good or excellent in this area. Again, for plan of action is, it all lands on instruction. It's being sure that our instruction is on point, our tier-one instruction, our high-quality instructional materials, materials, our visible learning, our State Department resources and having a clear vision from the district office and from the administrators that this is what we're using. Continuing in-depth professional development for all school leadership teams and teacher groups on the report card indicators. Again, Ms. Corners been out to every school at this point or is, those are scheduled. Strengthening our PLCs with a focus on academic achievement, preparing for success, that tier-one instruction for our EOC courses. Continuing focus on our on-time graduation rate, that's the HSSS, on-time graduation rate for each grade level. That's in our grad rate protocol that we begin those meetings. We had one round, our second round again begins November the 17th. Analyzing English and math credit by effectively using content credit recovery for those students who've struggled. Analyzing our content recovery programs to be sure we're getting the most bang for our buck and analyzing how we're doing that. Currently, if you make between a 55 and a 59, you're eligible for credit recovery as long as you don't have too many absences. We talked about chronic absenteeism last year, last meeting. We know that there's a certain level of absenteeism that once you exceed that, it really doesn't matter what you make in the class. You are not denied credit due to your absences. We continue to focus on our career readiness and again, as Ms. Corners said, our CDFs have done an amazing job with our internships. Continue to increase our percent of college readiness with SBT and ACT prep, dual credit. And again, we've talked about our advanced placement scores and our dual credit, our advanced learning opportunities in a prior meeting and we are absolutely rocking with that. Our teachers do an amazing job and our partnership with Central Carolina is essential. They are a good partner for us. Our EOC prep, we're looking at other schools like ours with higher passage rates. We have to continue to learn. If we think we've learned everything, know everything, then we're going to get passed by. Mentor of mine told me there is no marking time, except in band and in ROTC. You mark time there, but if you're marking time doing this, the job, somebody's going to walk right past you. We got to do better than that. Dedicated prep time, what is this going to look like? And that's part of the PLC discussion that we're having with our high school principals tomorrow. Immediate remediation, we have the advantage of having, once we give an assessment, getting immediate results so we know whether or not somebody's mastered a standard or not. We have opportunities for them to get help right then. All of our high schools have a power hour, win time, what we need now time built into their lunch schedules for students to get help right then, right there. And then we do have a new multilingual learner class for our students who are coming in new to the country, new to Kershaw County. It's an elective class that those students go and it's almost in a culturalization class where they go and they learn what's expected of them, how to manage school. Some of those in the high school haven't been in school for a long time. It's not just that they're new to the United States, it's they're basically new to education. We would have students at Camden High School who would come from a Latin American country and would not have been in school since they were 10, 11. And now we're putting them in a class and expecting them to do high school credit work for a 15-year-old, 16-year-old. They're not prepared. So we need to do something to help them get ready for that work and this class helps them with that. And it's an elective class that our interim teachers are teaching.
Questions?
Yes. Well, let's just a couple of comments. Obviously the bar is high and it's now going to be higher. Kudos to our, the one thing I've noticed here, and I guess this is my third non-consecutive term on the school board, and when I started back in, don't laugh, Dr. Goodwin. When I started back in 2007, the first time, I don't recall in any of those terms, this level of remarkable growth and improvement. So I can't, just can't praise our folks enough. And the one thing I want to note, academics, obviously that's where rubber meets the road. The teachers is where the nitty-gritty does take place, but the one thing I love about our district is that it is a whole coordinated effort from operations to food service to the academic department, to our health room folks. I mean, it's everybody. And any school I go into, the level of positivity is just, it radiates and you just feel it. Are our folks up to the challenge? Absolutely unequivocally say yes. The other thing I will say is that this time of year, actually when the scores start coming out and everything's embargoed, I always got a big headache and a level of delirium because I'm not a math guy, as Mr. Matthews knows, I'm a science guy. But I called Dr. Goodwin when we found out the state was going to have to go back and reevaluate and recalculate and aggregate to be able to disaggregate again and all that kind of stuff. And I said, are we doing our checks and balances? To his credit, giving Dr. Data, Dr. Corner some credit is that she was already on it. That's huge as well for Mr. Matthews, Dr. Corner, the ones who already have it, that they already know, we just got to wait for the state to come back and make their corrections. It's kind of sad. You can't go to stake for them, by the way. It's kind of sad. We are in some ways doing the calculations better than the folks above us who are doing the calculations. That's kind of on the side. The other thing is the so positive social media shout-outs that have been put out by the DO, our folks here, Julie and Becky, but also the schools themselves and the level of response that has been shown there, everybody is just like, you know, it's just enthusiasm. And I hope we get that going. But at the end of the day, the one thing I love the most is that we're getting our kids ready for whatever the next level is, be it work, the military, tech school, college. It shows that we're on track to get our kids ready for whatever's coming next for them when they finally muster up and get their diploma. So congratulations and kudos to everybody involved. Can't wait to see what happens next year.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, congratulations to everyone. It's very awesome. Just a real practical question, I may have missed it. For the ML group, I noticed North Central doesn't have that. Where does those points go? Which category?
They're reallocated to academic achievement and prepare for success.
They take those 10 points and split them back in five hours.
So those are worth 40 instead of 35.
I'm only a couple of years out of the game, but a very intelligent superintendent was part of my last few years, came in and said that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done and that while the report card is what it is, I won't call it an evil because you got to have some kind of litmus to tell you where you are and where you're heading. I don't always and haven't always agreed with how that works for them, but that wise man said, you know, it's the game and we're going to play the game to win. This report's very comprehensive considering what I know's underneath the rest of this report, all the data that was brought together to make this comprehensive report. And I want to thank you, Dr. Goodwin, for being the head coach for this game that we're playing. And it is not a game with our kids, of course. We are preparing them for life. I think the things that are aside from this report card and this report, I think people would be astounded at the amount of success and what we are doing for our kids here, what our communities are doing. Dr. King alluded to, I don't think I have ever recalled the kind of public reaction to school report cards that we have seen just in two days and it's been remarkable. So thank you for playing the game, to win the game and doing all the things necessary to make sure that we are heading in the right direction. And that's to everybody here at the district office, to our teachers, our students, our parents, our administrators, everybody. Bus drivers, as Dr. King said, food service, you name it, if you're part of the school district, you're part of the game and we appreciate we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
And Mr. Roberts, I misspoke. They actually are reallocated to academic achievement, student progress. I said preparing for success, but it's student progress.
We're a family. Family takes care of family.
I just want to say that as a teacher in this district, I am a firm believer that it takes the village and truly the village has come together to make sure that all of the students, all the needs have been met, bus drivers, all the people as a team. And I also affirm that teachers make all the other professions possible and that has been my belief and that's what I've lived by, that teachers make all other professions possible. Because someone had to have a teacher, they were not born doctors and lawyers and whatever. It took a teacher to teach them. And I do appreciate the use of friendly materials that was given this evening. I could understand what you were saying and I thank you because I don't want to always understand data like I should, but I thank you for the work of getting this compiled for us in a way that was easy to be understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, as they step back, you know, I think that Dan really sums it up. You know, we focus on the family field and every piece of the district, and when I mean pieces, I mean job roles, every piece makes a big difference. You know, I mentioned going and being able to go and visit Lugolf Elgin Middle School pass out biscuits yesterday, Dan going to North Central. But you know, when we walked into the cafeteria, I think at first they were a little shocked that they were receiving food. You know, they weren't making food. It was like, come out here, we got stuff for y'all. And you know, that's the key is everybody's got to know that they play an active role in what we're trying to do. This report card's only a tip of the iceberg. If you look at things like band and arts and what's going on there, what's going on in athletics, what's going on in academic team, what's going on in all of the other things that we host as a school, we're full-on success in everything. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it well. And that's just what we're going to do. And we're not going to forget our community partners along the way. It's not just the school district. You know, we saw the Sheriff's Department here tonight, but I can list 10 other groups that support everything we do and they own the success we're having too because they're that important. So it's a journey, it's not a destination, we've got a ways to go, but you know, it's interesting. interesting. We see the path now, and we'll continue to walk that path. There'll be ups and downs, but that's okay. We'll brush off and keep going when there are downs, and when there are ups, we'll celebrate them appropriately. So, thank y'all for all that you do. Y'all have really set the path, because your expectation in providing the resources that we need has been key in making this success possible. So, thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss resumation of retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel, contractual matter, superintendent Proper motion by Coach Blackman, second by Mr. Roberts. In a discussion here and none, all in favor, let me know by standing by. Is there a motion to reconvene to open session? Second. Proper motion by Ms. Vernon, second by Mr. Cameron. All in favor, let me know by standing by. An executive session, we discuss resumation of retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment change and transfer of certified and classified personnel, contractual matter, superintendent evaluation. Is there a motion to accept the administration recommendation concerning employment matters? Motion by Ms. Vernon, second by Coach Blackman. All most in favor, let me know by standing by. Those opposed, and it's unanimous. This evening, the Board of Trustees met in the executive session to conduct an annual job performance evaluation of Superintendent Jay Harrison Gilvin. The superintendent was evaluated in the following areas: general characteristic and leadership of non-instructionary area, instructional leadership and employment development, communication and community engagement, budget operations, management of resources, and leadership and innovation of specific goals. As chairman, on behalf of my fellow board members, I wish to announce that Dr. Gilvin is doing an exceptional job as superintendent. We applaud the superintendent for his focus on student achievement, so we want to say. The board is extremely pleased with the educational gain and strong student growth as evidenced by the District 24-25 report card rating. We also want to commend Dr. Gilvin for promoting fiscal responsibility in the district and continuing to increase the district general fund balance, all while successfully implementing pay increases for many staff members, to include but not limit to providing step increases, cost of living increases, and extension of Step 28 for teachers. The board would also like to congratulate Dr. Gilvin for being awarded the prestigious 2025 South Carolina National School of Public Relations Association Administration of the Year Award. Dr. Gilvin is an outstanding leader. He has a clear vision for students, educational need, and we continue to be impressed with his dedication to the district. As a result of Dr. Gilvin's job performance on his annual evaluation, is there a motion regarding the superintendent employment agreement? Mr. Chairman. Board colleagues, I move that based on Dr. Gilvin's exceptional performance evaluation for the 2024-25 school year, the board authorizes you to execute an amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement with the district to increase his salary by 2% effective July 1st, 2025, which is consistent with the terms of his contract and the annual percentage afforded for teachers. Also extend his employment for one additional year or through June 30th, 2029, and increase his automobile allowance by $500. I so move. Second by Mr. Roberts. In a discussion here and none, all in favor, let me know by raising your right hand, and that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn in closing prayer? Proper motion by Ms. Vernon, second by Ms. Runnet. All those in favor, let me know by standing by. And that's unanimous, Ms. Hamilton.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for abiding with us this evening. When we leave this building, Lord, but never from your divine presence, we ask that you dispatch your angels and lead us all safely back home and find all as well we get there. And we give you all the honor that is due you, and it's in the precious name of Jesus we count it done. Amen.